Jeff Wiesenfeld, who will chair this meeting, is on his way but has been delayed. So I'll, I will chair the meeting in his, in his absence. And we can get started. I, may I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 4th, 2007?
Second.
Second. Are there comments or any revisions needed in the minutes? Everyone think the minutes are okay? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are adopted. Prove. We'll turn next to the policy calendar. And Iris, shall I, would you like to say anything about these five, five matters?
Well, Mr. Chairman, before I begin, I'd just like to introduce a new senior member of our divisions team. Robert Lemieux joins us today. Today is actually his first day. And he's going to become the Executive Director of the Department of Design and Construction.
Welcome.
So we welcome Bob.
Welcome.
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Chairman, that Columbia's loss is CUNY's gain. Bob is joining us from Columbia Presbyterian, so we're very excited. The first, the first resolution is authorizing the design and build contract on behalf of Bronx Community College to install a new modular construction childcare facility. This facility will accommodate up to 124 children and will provide much-needed expanded childcare services for the campus community. The amount of the contract is, the total construction cost will be $4.4 million. And the contractor will be Vanguard Modular Building Systems, which the university has used before, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do you want to take these up one by one, or?
If you want, I can go through all of them and then we can.
Let's just pause and see if there are questions concerning the, this facility at Bronx Community College.
I just have a quick question. Is this an additional facility in addition to the current center or is this instead of a replacement and expansion?
A replacement.
How many children were accommodated before or up to the mark? Oh, so this is double. All right, excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's proceed to number two.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is to renovate the campus cafeteria and bookstore. The bookstore is quite frankly buried away on the second floor and will be allowed now to be moved to a more prominent position on the first floor. The cafeteria will move up to the second floor, so it'll be a mezzanine dining. And it will also allow us under this contract to put a new AC system into this much-needed space. And this contract is for $4 million, a mixture of both state and city funds. And we hope that the construction will be completed by May of 2009.
All right. Are there questions about this cafeteria?
Yeah, when will this commence?
Construction is supposed to start in March of 2008.
In March?
And the design was just completed in this past July, and then all the documents will have to be put out to bid.
No, I visited the Bronx Community College and I, I was just reviewing the cafeteria and the bookstore, so I think this will be a welcome addition. You need to have this on the list.
Good.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, let's go to the next one.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is a, a construction contract on behalf of Lehman College to install campus site security lighting. In 2002, 2003, for half of the campus, we were able to install security lighting. This contract and these funds will now allow us to extend this new lighting to the next half of the campus. And in particular, it will allow us to illuminate the sports fields at Lehman College. The amount of the contract is for $1.3 million. And construction, we're putting it out to bid an award, hopefully, starting this September, and construction will commence in April of 2008.
And how long is it expected to take before the lighting is finished?
Well, hopefully by November of 2008. But when you're doing electrical work, you always keep your fingers crossed.
Are there questions on this one or comments? Okay, the next one?
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is for Queens College. And this will be an upgrade for the Kufferberg Center Arts Complex. I think as all the trustees know, there are a number of facilities in this complex. There's the Lefrak Concert Hall, the Goodwin Turnback Museum, the Goldstein Theater, the Colden Auditorium, and the Colden Amphitheater. And what we're hoping to do with this contract is consolidate the brand of the Kufferberg Center, as well as do signage and lighting and landscaping, and do upgrades to a number of the facilities. We are using, in this contract, both city and state money as well as private funds. There was a private donation, and that's being used for the design of this work. And we hope for the design to start this October, and we hope to complete the design within nine months. The, the total cost will be about $6.4 million.
Okay. Questions on the Queens College project? All right, now let's do the, then the last one.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, I am very pleased to present to the Board of Trustees the master plan amendment for LaGuardia Community College. I think as many of the trustees know, in December of 2005, the university hired Halpern Architects to review the master plan for LaGuardia College, which was first done in 1996. And I think as the board knows, that LaGuardia College is one of our fastest-growing community colleges. With us today is Margaret Costilio. She is a principal with the firm, as well as Mr. Halpern, the owner and founder of the firm. And they will be making a presentation on the new master plan for LaGuardia Community College.
Very, very well. Good. Welcome to you.
Good afternoon. We are here to present the amendment, the 1996 master plan that was done, which really justified the acquisition of Center 3. Since that time, there have been changes. We have a new president, increased enrollments, and changes to the community as well as Long Island City. To give you some history, this is a historic photo of the area in Long Island City, just over the Queensborough Bridge. It was originally a factory, very industrial neighborhood. And this is a view looking toward Thompson Avenue. The original White Motor Company is now the main building. The site next to it became the Equitable Bag, is now the E-Building. Other factories such as the Chicklets and Everready are down this block and ending with the grand Loosewiles biscuit factory, which is now Center 3. This is the, the college in plan. You can see here the main building, which was the original building of LaGuardia, was the college started in 1971. E-Building was added 1988, and joined by demapping the street. The L Building, 1989, is a leased building. It's not owned by the college. And then as of 1996, Center 3 and Center 4. We began the master plan with a programming phase where we looked at the entire campus. As you can see, it's actually divided by two buildings, which becomes a sort of an east campus and a west campus. We looked at all of the square footage for the master plan, which we have 887,827 net available square feet. Working with the college, the initial assessment, we came up with a shortfall of 200,000 square feet. There were discussions over eliminated some of the hosted elements, but the focus of the master plan was to increase instructional space, lab space, and offices. Because of Center 3, we have a unique opportunity to look again at the campus in terms of what programs could be co-located. This is a bubble diagram, a relationship diagram, again looking at east and west, west being Center 3. You can see how they're gathered or clustered. And there's an opportunity now of developing a liberal arts cluster as we move main departments such as English over to Center 3. It could be co-located with language acquisition, general education. There's a strong component of languages for a very large immigrant population in the school. Actually, it says there are 160 nations represented by the student body. There are opportunities with business and technology, too, to form a cluster with corporate ed and some of the non-credit with the credit, creating synergies and utilizing resources effectively. We began with also looking at the site. This is LaGuardia, which is founded by the rail yards, Thompson Avenue, which is a main thoroughfare, heavily trafficked, and Van Dam Street. Cars, trucks, entrance to the expressway is all surrounding LaGuardia Community College. On the other hand, there's great access to public transportation. Subway lines are within easy walking distance to provide the students a way to get to this One of the studies we also looked at is if it, because it does have a shortage of square footage, even with Center 3, how could it expand? One opportunity in the future, which is not part of the plan, could be to build a building on Center 4, such as an athletic, or expand the main building. But at this time, we really looked at the existing site and how we could best utilize the space. LaGuardia Community College has a very strong community outreach with its programs and departments. As former factory buildings, it shuts out that in some ways with these masonry walls. What we're proposing is to open up the ground floor along Thompson Avenue with amenities such as bringing the bookstore from the basement up to the level and cafes, even opening the library at certain times for the public and make the college reflective of its mission physically. Center 3, which is really the focus of the master plan, was a unique building at the time, one of Turner's, they actually highlighted in their 100 years, enormous concrete building, nine floors, tremendous masonry structure. But it was also the state of the art factory. You can see here in this historic photo from the Astoria, Historical Society, that they really intended to bring natural light into the workers. And this is a photograph of the original restaurant. Today, Center 3 does have spectacular views from the top looking over Manhattan, and there are Clara Story lights on the ninth floor rent coming back from the factory building. However, over time, this incremental approach has led more often than not to double-loaded corridors that are 400 feet long, which as classrooms have been, you know, needed to keep needing to use the space. These are plans of the building, which really highlights from the basement to the fourth floor, how much of the building has already been built. Incremental approach, which will show you the implications of that. On the other hand, we're at a critical juncture here. If you look at the floors that are not built, the fifth and sixth are actually leased floors, and the eighth and ninth have very little infrastructure. And to give you a typical example of the lower floors, the stairs are along the perimeter, the elevators are along the perimeter, the mechanical rooms are along the perimeter, and the toilet rooms are along the perimeter. And of course, it's easier to stack them, but what is going to happen if it continues in this vein? We showed a lighting study that in the E-Building, with the atrium and the courtyards, you bring light into these large factory buildings. Center 3, if it continues this way, has very little light and will have very little life in this building. The proposed plans, these are diagrams, which I'll just touch on. One of the main things is that we're up to the fourth floor really with program. And working with Van Dusen and Associates, we realized quite early on that to move thousands of people through this building really needed careful study. To give you some perspective, these floors are about 80,000 square feet. The whole of this building could fit into one floor of that building. It's the largest building in the CUNY system. As we move up to the fourth floor, our concern is you're not going to be able to get in or out of this building. So right now, we suggest that a serious infrastructure project be developed, looking at the escalators. What they propose is double-height escalators to move people through this nine-story building across to E and M within 15 minutes. Strengthen the horizontal circulation, locate classrooms toward the center. We're proposing an atrium in the center to bring in light. And all future planning is cognizant of making views and light available to people as they circulate the building. This is a diagram of what we're talking about, the atrium at the center with classrooms bordering it with offices along the perimeter because they're not on the dime like the students are. We're suggesting that the bubble diagram that we show where we co-locate liberal arts not only be done horizontally but also vertically because of such large floor plates, it's easier sometimes to go from floor to floor than across a floor. This is an early typical plan showing the atrium, classrooms located to the center, a strong spine tied to the two-story stairs, working in conjunction with monumental stairs, lounges located off this atrium. And then this was a rendering we did early showing how we could bring light through faceted glass. It brings daylight into the center of the space. We propose this space really becomes the heart of the campus. Instead of a series of classrooms and offices, now we have a vertical green that with the natural light, we hope could be landscape. I should point out that extends, maybe at some future date, to the roof, which would be a wonderful place for a roof garden. Because we looked at the whole campus, just to touch briefly on main and E-Building, you can see here precedence for atrium skylights, a 400-foot-long corridor with a, with a skylight has tremendous impact on, on the length. The atrium brings in light, the corridors borrow from light, both of the atrium and the outside courtyard. These are huge floors. This is M and E together. I know you can't read these plans, but the courtyard here really does help provide a spatial marker of where you are in these large places on the floor. And with the proposed plan, like E-Building has an atrium, we're proposing that M-Building, which has a full basement, again, you bring light into the lower level. That could, it could be attractive. No one wants to be in the basement of M right now. We studied circulation. These are just representative of many of the diagrams that we did, showing that the horizontal circulation is punctuated by vertical circulation, and those nodes become identif, identifiable areas within these large floor plates as to where you are. And we propose that then there's skylit. Programmatically, we studied bringing student services toward the center to make use of the courtyards. For instance, the cafeteria, which some students weren't even aware, because it's at such a far-removed location from the entrance. We had it in the courtyard, using a, a space that has no columns, could also double as a multi-event space, which the college needs desperately. They can host many programs. If they had a space, it would be very valuable to them. Student clubs, make them more visible. Again, these students have a lot of spirit. We interviewed them. They invited us to their club meetings, and they have a lot of enthusiasm. They just need space to have them. So after many months of developing this plan, the question was, how do we get there from here? And we developed a phasing program, starting at the top. In conjunction with Phase 1, we think it's very important that the infrastructure plan be developed to consolidate the infrastructure, to bring it to the interior, so that from here on, it's always located where it will be planned in the eventual build-out. This is the eighth floor, which has a piece of the atrium. We're starting to suggest here a chiller plant and that major infrastructure, a piece of major infrastructure is added as we renovate each floors. And risers are brought through the building with new stairs to facilitate people moving through this building. The ninth floor would be next with a piece of the atrium and an escalator. Again, it's an incremental approach, but we think that adding the cooling towers at the appropriate phases, eventually you will get a, a very efficient and functioning building. In Phase 3, we're suggesting at this point, the escalator system and the atrium be built because we can't really continue on with the other phases without this transportation system in place. Once that is, you can renovate the floors six and five, once you can get to them, which is important. We're suggesting occasionally two-story spaces, which I think you could see in the section. From here, we would go on to the main building, which also needs a renovation. The infrastructure has to be completely replaced. And then to the L Building, the E-Building was most recently renovated, although that is where the sciences are, and there's a great need to expand that area here. But in terms of the major infrastructure and to be able to use Center 3 and, you know, do this phased renovation, it's important to have the vision of how the systems can work to implement in a systematic way. Now is the time, we feel, to really attack Center 3. And eventually, you will have a building that will not just be a series of classrooms and corridors, but actually the heart of LaGuardia Community College campus, their main academic building. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm sure there'll be some questions. Very good, very good presentation. Are there some questions for the architects? Matt?
The timeline for these various phases of construction, can you run that by us again, please?
Well, one of the issues with the phasing was to break it down into pieces, and that's why we did floor by floor. But it really depends on the funding stream as to whether you can do a whole floor or a half a floor. We can look at it many ways, but it depends.
Suppose you took the most optimistic view, and we're not a problem which we know is not the case. Suppose we took a view, how would it?
In terms of how would we?
The timeframe?
The timeframe.
It would take years.
Years, yes.
Quite a lot of years.
Five?
Probably a decade.
Decade, yes.
Yes.
And the building is in use during the various phases? Is that?
That's right.
Practical for the students and faculty?
Well, as, you know, I pointed up to, the fourth floor is really quite built out, although a portion of the fourth floor, a third, is not. But, you know, then you have a, an empty floor on eight and nine, five and six are built, so they're still in the building. But in terms of eventually using this building, we think that, you know, with sound attenuation, you know, careful study would have to be done to block the sound while this is being renovated. But that's one reason to start at eight and nine and work down. You're sort of separating. Careful study was done in locating the atrium to not undo what's already been done. If you notice, the atrium goes to the third floor. We're proposing the third floor becomes the new first floor with an escalator up, so we don't go back and renovate the spaces that you have now because there is still life expectancy in those units, the mechanical units. But eventually, that, it would be good to do that so we can get light into this building and consolidate the systems.
Mr. Chairman, in an all-perfect world, you would probably want to take everybody out and renovate the building once. But we don't live in an all-perfect world, and that would be almost an impossible undertaking for us.
I have a couple of unrelated questions. In the, in your transportation studies, have you been able to make it easy for disabled students to get around this building? I mean, escalators won't work for a lot of people.
Oh, we do have a proposal for five elevators, certainly for the eighth and ninth floor and for the disabled, so.
So will the building be fairly transparent for, for disabled students?
Yes.
They'll be able to move around to the?
Absolutely. Although the escalators border one side of the atrium, the elevators are on the other. They want people to use the escalators, but it's, it's right there as well. It's not, as though they would have a secondary kind of.
And an unrelated question, because I know this is an old piece of sort of industrial architecture. Are there preservation issues that you have to worry about in terms of the exterior appearance?
It's not landmark.
Not landmark?
No. No. Neither the interior nor the exterior.
Landmark schlock over there.
Some people love that old industrial architecture. If you were in London, it'd be landmarked. It's not right.
That's not a trivia question, because there are some landmark areas over there.
Yeah.
It's not, and it's an unusual building, and it certainly stands out, and it's quite visible. And it has a terracotta system. I think there's an indication study looking at the exterior. Our focus is really on the.
The one, one question that I have, and maybe this is somewhat unrelated also, because I drive past this building quite a bit because it's on the way to the Queensborough Bridge. And I've often been concerned about the traffic pattern and how dangerous it is for individuals to cross the streets. And I'm just wondering if there have been any issues with students there, and are we trying to coordinate any effort, you know, with the municipal authorities to maybe change the traffic pattern or to get some stoppage or something along the way that's more friendly to us within the university system?
Well, I can tell you that since we started the master plan, it used to be you'd end up on the number seven in a small island, and you could see the students would just start walking. They've actually closed off the street, so there's a place to wait before you cross the street. Not that they wait, but there is a place to wait. The other problem is crossing Van Dam. And I, we did discuss it. Actually, the community board has attended several meetings and are very excited about the plan. We've talked about bringing bike path, and, and I know they're interested in the gateway to Queens perhaps at Van Dam. But one idea would be to have a bridge across Van Dam. But the discussion was it may not be practical or DOT, may have issues. I, I, you know, it, it is something that would be an idea to have a bridge across, but the feasibility of it.
Yeah, because I was wondering if, if in our plan, and if there was a way to coordinate an effort where we could get a bridge or something over there, and then we could incorporate that aspect into our part of the facility if municipal authorities could buttress it in some way.
Well, one of the issues, Phil, is that, I speak with a hat that I used to wear, is that both DOT and city planning don't like to put these bridges in because, as noted, there's a lot of truck traffic here, and this is a truck route. And a lot of trucks are above height. They're not to the specification that they say they are. And so what tends to happen with these bridges is that they get hit by trucks. And then you have to close the bridge or you have to repair the bridge. So there's the issue of that, and it's also the issue of maintenance. Although CUNY is around and would probably agree to maintain the bridge, or a lot of entities that don't, that start by saying, yeah, we'll maintain the bridge. And then push comes to shove, and after a couple of years, they say, well, we don't have money to maintain the bridge. And then the city has to maintain the bridge. I think one of the important aspects of the plan, and what I really think both the college and I know Dale Mello is here, they work very hard with the consultants, as well as the consultants, was to create an environment where students could possibly move from building to building internally and not have to go outside and sort of face the elements. That's not to say people wouldn't do it, but we were trying to create a welcoming environment and a circulation that allowed people to work within the college itself and not have to go outside.
Andrew?
Since this is an old industrial building, are there any asbestos concerns?
There are, I, most of them, I think, have been addressed by the college.
Yeah, any floors can have an, any time.
Probably taken out in those biscuits.
There actually is a sugar sign.
A sugar?
Yeah, there's a lot of sugar here to the ceiling.
That's right.
We try to paint it. The paint won't adhere because of the sugar.
Actually, this was such a large building that the trains actually went into the building. They didn't load from outside. There were train tracks in the building, and they would load from within the building. That's how large this building is.
The train tracks are still there.
Still there.
In the back.
Oh, amazing.
So much for mass transit.
Do you know about the King's Cross Project in London?
Oh, I didn't.
Well, there, they're taking an old industrial part that, that used to be the coal transportation to drop off for the entire city, and still has trains and huge sheds. And they're preserving these old industrial buildings, but in a way that converts them to, to actually to a, to a huge arts college, which, and it's, this, this sounds a little bit like, that's some of, that's a whole complex, a huge, big 50-acre complex. But the issues of preserving the old industrial, some of the old industrial. some of the old industrial architecture while making it useful now is a hugely interesting undertaking, that they put a great deal of preservation zeal into trying to figure out how to balance the elements. Any other questions for the, about the master plan? Yeah?
It's kind of, I guess it's, I don't know, it's a little bit unrelated, but I just think it's like some of the, you know, the community in general, and they were saying a few issues they have with, they can't each see, you know, they own this. They can do it and people.
Would be a constitutional concern. Without even asking the vice chancellor for legal affairs, I can't see how, this would not be a church-state issue. It would be for Jews, for Sikhs, or anybody else.
Not really, because at Brooklyn College, you know, if they have a room, they have even in. Case, they have to, there's a space that they have. Issues also.
Muslim students have space of their own at LaGuardia? Is this, which school are we talking about?
President Mello, I was a.
And I think student movement president might be somewhat misinformed. We've dealt with this in a lot of different ways. One of the things that we've done three years ago is set aside a quiet reflection place to set off in private, and students can use that for whatever.
Excuse me, President Mello, could you come to the table so we can hear you?
We've set off a reflection space so students can use that for whatever purposes they find necessary, whether it be Muslim students praying or other students who need a time during the day for a variety of purposes. So it is a non-denominational area, but an area where students can use for multiple purposes. We have tried to be as accommodating as we can to the multiple purposes that the student has.
Other questions or comments? If not, you've heard discussion of these, one, two, three, four, five projects. Are you, are you prepared to take them up together? All right, I'll take a motion on all five, please. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Those carry? And having concluded all our action items, would you like to be the chair during the report section of the meeting? I'll give you the gavel anyway.
It doesn't take much work. Go ahead.
Iris, do you have a report of any kind, or a general report for the committee, or have we?
I just want to let, well, no, I just wanted to let the committee know that this summer, we've been working very diligently with all the campuses to develop our new five-year capital plan. And there are many elements that have gone into the plan, projects like LaGuardia College, where we can't fully fund the entire project, but we will be funding portions of the project, as well as on many of the campuses, major infrastructure upgrades, which is something that we have found over the last few years have gone wanting. And my sense is that probably by the, I guess, the middle of October, the chancellor will be ready to sort of share that plan.
We will, first of all, this will probably be the most ambitious capital program that this university has ever undertaken. I don't want to quote a number now, but it's going to be considerably larger than any one that we've done in the past. We've been having some private discussions with the governor's people to get a sense of order of magnitude, if they would be receptive to a request at this level, and that's certainly an ongoing discussion. As early as maybe three hours ago, four hours ago, we had yet another discussion on this particular matter. This university has many needs. LaGuardia is a great example, and we're going to try to be as accommodating as we possibly can. This request is also going to come out coincidentally with work of the Higher Education Commission. That is, we'll be completing its work in the next couple of months, and we will have some, what I would think are imaginative and far-reaching recommendations that the commission, I envisage, will come out with. So I want to compliment Mr. Chairman, our Vice Chancellor, Iris Weinsholl, who's really done, in a very short period of time, a rather remarkable, thorough job working with our campuses to really delve deep, to really understand the needs that we have, and try to accommodate those needs within some realistic financial framework that we feel comfortable sitting upon. I will be briefing the board with Vice Chancellor Weinsholl in a preliminary way on, in the September meeting. We believe, and although the division of the budget would like to have our request earlier, we will defer and probably bring this to the board for their review and approval at the November meeting, but prior to that, obviously, there will be open forum and opportunities for people to comment on this as we go forward. So we're making good progress. I take the credit. You can adjourn. You've been here all the time. It seems only fair.
I'll just echo a comment that I've heard our vice chair stayed at a number of these meetings and at the construction fund, that as we look at these capital priorities, we keep safety issues, you know, first and foremost.
It's right at the top.
The highest priority, and then, you know, and then, because with a lot of these old buildings, you know, you can, you get into some pretty bad situations.
Absolutely.
So are there any questions for the Vice Chancellor? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Well done.